Okay, everyone, it's six o'clock Verizon time. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
On Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, December 11th.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka.
My last time is being first on roll call? Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
Mrs. Salagi.
Here.
Mrs. Byrd.
I'm here.
And Mr. Castellano.
Here. Okay, so a little, a little special deviation from the normal course of events. We are going to have a special moment and swear in Mrs. Miss Alabarda. And then we'll go back into executive and proceed as normal. So I'll let Chandra go ahead with the proceedings.
Okay, thank you. Whoops. Thank you, Mr. Castellano. So Terry, if you can unmute yourself, Ms. Alabarda. And then you can repeat after me. I, Terry Alabarda.
I, Terry Alabarda.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to, to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Terry Alabarda.
I, Terry Alabarda.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS 19.
RS 19.
4-1.
4-1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense, or offense listed in.
Or offense listed in.
NJHS.
NJHS.
18A.
18A.
Colon 12-1.
Colon 12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the, according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you very much. I did send you the oath as well as the ethics four. If you can sign those and can move back. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Terry.
Thank you.
It's great to have you onboard. So what I'm gonna do is propose that we'll go into executive. When we come out and start the regular public, we'll give you the regular public session after executive. We'll give you a shout out and an opportunity to say a few words and say hi to everyone at home. Of course, you are at home, but you know, whatever you'd like to do at that point, if that's okay with everyone. And so at this point, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and I'm gonna ask for a motion to go in executive session.
Motion.
And. Floyd seconds.
Yeah.
All right, with, with hands raised, I'll see you on the other side. Okay, I think everyone is here. I'm now gonna call our public session to order and welcome everyone to our December business meeting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, December 11th, 2020.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda.
Here.
Mr. Delabarka.
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
Mrs. Salagi.
Here.
Mrs. Byrd.
Here.
And Mr. Castellano.
Here. Okay, everyone, when you see the flag appear on your screen, we are going to say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm now gonna ask for a motion on the minutes. That's 5.1 through 5.13.
So made.
Second.
Mrs. Salagi, Mr. Price. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda.
I abstain.
Mr. Delabarka.
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Did it go through?
There you go. Now you're, I hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Price, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi.
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd.
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all again and, and welcome again to our December regular business meeting. The, the first thing I, I wanna do is congratulate our newest board member, Ms. Terry Alabarda. It's, let's have a hand for her. It's, it's great to have you back with us, Terry. For those who don't know, Terry was a board member with us in 2018. She did an outstanding job. Terry is a distinguished educator in the Pleasantville School District, has recently received her principal's certificate, and of course, is a parent of three students in our Egg Harbor Township school system. And so again, welcome. And we just wanna turn it over to you, Terry, for anything you'd like to say or, you know, shout out to anyone at home. Anything you'd like to, to offer.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the warm welcome. I really felt good today, you know, joining with you guys. And I look forward to working with everyone. And like always, I'm gonna do my best for the students of Egg Harbor Township. And I'm gonna send out a shout out to my sister who gets to do hockey duty in the freezing cold every Tuesday now. So I'm really going to miss freezing every Tuesday night. Oh, and I want to congratulate two of the teachers, were former teacher of my, the Teachers of the Year. Ms. Webster, Marielle, and Ms. Spangler, my children had them, and they were excellent teachers. And I want to congratulate all the Teachers of the Year and paraprofessionals.
Thank you very much, Terry. We appreciate that. And again, it's, it's great to have you here with us. This is our last meeting of this school year and also the last year as we had, the last meeting as we head into the holidays. So things get rushed at the end, so I just wanna start off by, you know, saying to everyone on the call, everyone listening and watching, however you celebrate, that we wish you a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And I wanna thank Mr. Ellis and Mrs. Summer for their service on the board. They both have left us during the course of this year. Normally, if we were in person, they, they would be with us and we'd have a, an award for them. But I'm sure we're gonna make sure that we get that, that to them. So we wanna thank both of them for our service. And I wanna thank all the board members because this has been a tough year. You know, there's no playbook for a pandemic. We've been figuring it out and working through some very difficult things and have come together and worked as a team. I wanna thank Mrs. Byrd for doing an excellent job as Vice President this past year. You know, the President of the Board has additional duties and responsibilities that are, are difficult. And Mrs. Byrd, as Vice President, has been extremely helpful to me in doing each and every one of those duties. She's been on the ground floor and, and part of everything, and I thank her so much. While she is someone who's very detail oriented, at the same time, she sees the big picture and she speaks out for students. And that's, at the end of the day, that's what we're here for. So we thank you for a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. That was very kind of you. I appreciate it so much, and you've done a great job. Like you said, there is no playbook, and you have led us through all of this difficulties very, very successfully. So thank you.
Thank you. So after tonight's meeting, our next meeting, just so everyone knows, will be January the 5th. That's a Tuesday. That's at 7:00 PM, and that's when the board will reorganize. It will be a new board, though you'll see many familiar faces, and we'll go through that reorganization process that night. It's my hope that that next board, that new board, will be the board that sees the end of this pandemic and we get back to normal. So we're all hoping and praying on that, and we certainly see so many positive signs out there and the light at the end of the tunnel. And just before I hand it over to Dr. Gruccio once again, I, I wanna thank, as I do every, every meeting, I wanna thank our administration for their leadership. I wanna thank our great teachers and our staff for all they've done and continue to do for our students to get us through this difficult time. So great job, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Gruccio.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. I too would like to express congratulations to Ms. Alabarda and welcome back to the team. Superintendent's report for December begins with a congratulations to the 2021 Teachers of the Year and the Educational Service Professionals of the Year. This has certainly been a year like no other, and their dedication and service to our students and to our school district is certainly admired and appreciated. Our current reality has us two weeks into our all-virtual instruction template, if you will, model. The county is experiencing more COVID-19 cases and our district is experiencing more cases every day. In fact, 22 in the last 15 days. County school districts are also experiencing difficulty in managing coverage for classes and just like us have had moved to virtual instruction. In fact, three more just prior to this meeting have moved to all virtual instruction until mid-January. All with the hope to, to provide students with more consistent delivery of education and to assist all with narrowing the spread of this virus. When it comes to the health, safety, and welfare of a student or staff, we will always err on the side of caution. And I say it each and every week that this decision was not made easily, and it certainly was not made to harm anyone, but to protect everyone. I appreciate your cooperation with following the district expectations for student learning. I realize that learning from home requires everyone to alter the way things have been done with their daily routines. But together, we will work to make the, out, may get through this and make the best of things as we keep our focus on student achievement, a positive climate and culture, and keeping in touch with our community partners as best as we can. So please take time to read the weekly newsletter that's released usually on a Monday or Tuesday morning as it contains many resources for social and emotional support for parents and students, as well as information on food delivery. I also realize that all virtual teaching and learning is not ideal for some students, including some of our special ed, special needs students. As a seasoned educator and a mom of a special education teacher, I am well aware of the challenges. I have seen how teachers, paraprofessionals, and parents have collaborated in a team approach to work together in the best interest of our students during this unprecedented time. I will continue to make sure that resources are available every day to assist parents and students with a virtual learning environment. Our Director of Special Education has contacted families via letters and phone calls and has provided assistance for student learning PK 12 and beyond. Case managers are readily available to serve students and family every day with concerns or issues, and everyone in our school community is working hard to engage students and families. We are actively planning for the future as we look forward to getting students back to in-person learning as soon as possible, while it, it is safe to do so. A few more updates for the district. Yesterday, we and the world experienced a glitch with Google. And while this affected online learning for a short time everywhere, it was very impressive to see how quickly Google rectified this situation and continues to reach out and keep us posted. In honor of the gift-giving season, the men's club from the Village Grand continued their holiday gift drive. Mr. Jerry Sakin reached out to me and shared that in spite of the pandemic, the holiday gift drive produced $10,575 for 88 Fernwood students and all of our Eagle Academy students. This was a very nice gesture. The students were presented with $125 gift cards to Bosco's. And Mr. Sakin also wanted to acknowledge Mr. Bud Smith, Director of Eagle Academy, and Ms. Alicia Papard, who is in a, a Guidance Council at Fernwood, who helped with coordinating the identification and distribution to these students. And on behalf of the Egg Harbor Township School District, we are grateful for the men's club's efforts and their generosity. Fall sports wrapped up with many athletes being honored by the Cape Atlantic League, the Press of Atlantic City in the state of New Jersey. We have a biggie here. Egg Harbor Township has its first All-American Boy Soccer Player, Ahmad Brock. He was on the front page of the Press of Atlantic City last week. His accomplishment will be awarded to him and to the high school. The United States Soccer Association is still working on how they're going to recognize the All-American players this year because we're in this virtual situation. And I also hope that we have the opportunity at some point this year to bring Ahmad and other students that deserve recognition in front of the Board of Education to honor them. So congratulations to all, and we, we will be reaching out at some point between now and June to get folks either on a virtual meeting or, you know, in person. But time will tell. The crystal ball, I do not have. Thank you to administrators, teachers, and students who are part of the food and clothing drives this year for, for the needy in our community. Their efforts are appreciated by all. At this time, Ms. Karen Semit, who is the Supervisor of Health and Physical Education and our district nursing staff, will present an overview of the programs that she supervises. But before she does so, Karen, I'd like to thank you for the work that you have done working on the district COVID cases and serving as a district liaison to the Atlantic County Health Department. So with that, Karen will have a brief presentation in the areas of health, physical education, and nursing.
Good evening, Dr. Gruccio. Can everyone hear me? Okay, good evening, Dr. Gruccio, Mr. Castellano, and the members of the Board of Education. For those of you who might not know me, Terry, I don't think we've ever met before. My name is Karen Semit, and I've worked for Egg Harbor Township Schools for 21 years. 25 total in education, starting out as health teacher, coach, elementary guidance counselor, high school guidance counselor, and now supervisor of health, PE, and nursing. At the high school, I serve as the team leader for the ninth and 10th grade Intervention and Referral Service Team, and I am a member of the 504 team. I'm also the driver education coordinator, and I work as the liaison between our high school and the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission. I've had two children that went through our school system, and my husband has lived in Egg Harbor Township his entire life. I've lived here for the last 21 years. My older daughter is in college right now as a nursing major, so my first slide is dedicated to our nurses. Next slide. Our nursing staff is amazing. With COVID, I have to give a shout out to our 14 full-time nurses that work effortlessly, without complaining. Elizabeth Derbyshire and Ginger Palamo at the Sleigh Ball Complex, Mary Kay Nell at Swift, Brenda Korsanowski and Judy O'Rourke at the Davenport Complex, Michelle Cortez and Sarah Legge at Miller School, Melanie Charlton and Christina Summers at Alder Middle School, Carrie Akita and Jeannie Roberts at Fernwood Middle School, and Mara Wren, Jan Miller, and Rebecca Camp at the high school. Thank you for all you do with COVID and contact tracing. A little slide about the school nurses and COVID because COVID doesn't end on weekends or evenings. I'm also the after-hours contact for the Atlantic County Health Department and us and get calls on the weekends and the evenings, even on holidays, on Thanksgiving, the health department doesn't stop. We are up to over 90 cases of staff and students with COVID, and not even to mention the hundreds of people that have to quarantine. So the nurses are like Nancy Drew. They, they investigate and investigate and not, not leave a stone unturned. So thank you, nurses. And in addition to what they do with COVID, they do what they normally do. They provide care for students and screenings. And they also work towards our district goals. A shout out to Melanie Charlton, who wrote a grant to get AEDs in the after, in the middle schools for after-school athletics. And now we're working on trying to find grant funding to replace our AEDs in all the building. They were purchased approximately 2004, so we're working now with community partnerships of Janet's Fund and Shore Memorial to get those replaced. Next slide, please. I recently attended a webinar. Our health MPE standards will be revised, and the new implementation will be headed for September 2022. I take this information so seriously because the content is so sensitive. Especially in grades 6 through 12, we are teaching the kids about consent, texting, gang and domestic violence, dating violence, safe haven law, conflict resolution, problem solving, suicide prevention. So we will be working and implementing and updating the curriculum every, during this school year and, and next summer. Next slide. Our district goal of improving student achievement. Currently, right now, we have over 600 kids learning about driver education. They're in the class, learning virtually, and if and when we come back to school in the spring, we'll be taking the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Test. We work with New Jersey Brain Alliance, and we were just awarded $750 to implement safe driving activities like Allstate's X the Tax or Share the Keys. Next slide. Also, an improving student achievement and a good partnership is with New Jersey Manufacturers. Our students are creating public service announcements, which are 30-second videos that emphasize the importance of avoiding distracted driving. And the prizes range anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000 for the school. Next slide. Our district goal of supporting climate, culture, and pride is with our Not Even Once program. It's an interactive opioid awareness program designed for high school students. Egg Harbor Township Police Officers are all EHT alumni, and together with our PE teachers, they educate and inform students about the dangers of abusing opioids. Next slide. Another goal of supporting climate, culture, and, and pride is our partnership and involvement with the American Heart Association. Before COVID, we did excellent and energetic activities like jump rope for heart or hoops for heart, but now we're all virtual, so we had to get with the times. And our PE teachers are hosting virtual family fun nights where they do a variety of activities for families to have fun and exercise together. Next slide. Our district goal of expanding community partnerships is again with Atlantic Care Healthy Schools. PE teachers from every school building or nurse applies for the grant, and we get hundreds and hundreds of dollars for CPR training, nutrition, and social-emotional learning. Next slide. Every June, the health and PE teachers add up their healthy activities, and Atlantic Care gives us money. It turns our health into wealth, and last June of 2020, we received $2,350 to turn back into our field days and other healthy activities for the kids. And my last slide is again, we are participating in health careers. It's called Virtual Explorers for 2020 and 21, where the students can interactively learn about health careers. Anywhere from trauma, advanced practical nurses, to nurse midwives, to flight team mobile intensive care nurses. So we are learning virtually, and we're exercising at home and trying to stay happy mentally, physically, and socially. And that's my presentation. Oh, the last slide. Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Semit. Thank you for all the hard work that you have done, and thank you for your presentation. I'll conclude the superintendent's report with reminding everyone that our school district and staff and I are available to field any questions that you may have regarding our current situation. I know it's been difficult, and I know there are some questions, but throughout this journey, I have noted that this plan will be fluid and contains provisions to pivot to and from virtual teaching and learning at any time, and that has happened. So feel free to reach out to myself or my administrative staff through email, phone calls, letters, whatever's best for you. And I promise you that you'll receive answers quicker that way via a phone call or an email rather than using social media or seeking information elsewhere. So we are your relevant source of information. We are always open to building relationships and learning more about the needs of our school community, and I encourage you to want the same. We will remain hashtag EHT strong through all this. And I, due to a personal family matter that has just been brought my way, I was just informed this evening. I'm gonna turn the reins of this meeting over to Mr. Santilli so I could be with my family right now. I wish everyone a healthy and peaceful holiday season. All right? Good night.
Good night, Dr. Gruccio. Thank you, Karen. That was a great presentation. But also thank you for the great work that you've been doing. The work that you've been doing is, is absolutely crucial right now to keeping everyone safe and healthy. And so it's very, very, very much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Do any board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. President. I do have a question.
Mr. Price.
Ms. Semit, how you doing this evening?
Hi, Michael.
How are you? Hi, I just have a question about the CPR, or any of the nurses' CPR instructors.
Over the years, they have been instructors, and currently we have one. I don't know if she's renewing that certification or not.
Okay, that was just a question that I had. Thank you.
Let's see, Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. Mike made me think of a question, so thank you, Mike. The IEDs that you were saying, if, can you quantify how much it would cost to replace them since they, they are pretty old?
They're approximately between $800 and $1,200 each machine. The machine that. We have one and two, one in every building, like one for Sleigh Ball Primary, one for Sleigh Ball Elementary. We have four at the high school. They have to be accessible within a three-minute run, so if you're somewhere, you have to be able there and get it back. So that's why when there's. So that's why when the school
So approximately like twenty-five? Would twenty-five, would, would twenty-five be a good estimate?
Yes, I could count them up and uh, let you know.
It's okay. I'm just wondering.
Yes, about twenty-five.
If the grant doesn't come through, if, you know, we can figure out how to have that because it's such a safety focus.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Seems like only yesterday uh, our Community Partnership Foundation provided the first set of AEDs and now we're ready for the next generation of them. So we'll find a way to get that done.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, I just want to say to Karen, I remember when we got those. I was, I was working at Davenport at the time. And uh, they were a whole new thing in our, in our uh, way of doing things and we learned a lot. But I definitely think anything we can do to help replace them so they're up to date, we certainly want to do that. And tell Kevin I said hi because I know him when. And uh, you actually report to I, a special thank you to those nurses because I know how hard they're working and they're helpful, helping our district during this crazy times we're living through. But thank you. Good to see you, Karen.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely agree. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Was my electronic hand raised, Mr. President, or? My regular, I'm really, I'm really working on that. So, one, the presentation was great and uh, two, um, to our frontline workers, nurses, whether you're in a school or whether you're in a hospital. Of course, thank you for all that you do. And I guess my question just kind of goes back to the, the thing that did grab my attention was also the um, A, the AEDs. Um, and I guess it'd be a miss, um, Anaya question, is that, do we, are we only, do we budget for just the ones that are in the particular buildings and the additional ones for after-school or near the football field? Are those just, is that additional to our, uh, you mentioned a grant, so I didn't know if we would.
If I could answer that, Chandra.
Okay.
So, so we are going to see if I, we could find grant funding to replace certain ones in phases. We don't have to budget for it. Within our budget, we, we buy the batteries and the AED pads which expire. Machines are working great, they're in great condition. They get checked every month. We do a checklist, so, so nothing's wrong with them at all.
So this is just ad replacement?
Yes.
Add a piece, okay. We, okay, I didn't know what we, okay, I just thought maybe we could, the grant, you want to see if the grant covers it, but if it doesn't, we're just going to purchase, that would be something we would just purchase or is already in the budget.
In phases as the years go on.
Okay.
Any other board members from Mrs. Semet? Very good. Thank, thank you again, Karen, and as we said, you know, great job and, and our nurses and all of your staff, and thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Um, at this point, uh, we would normally hear from our student reps, however, they are at a mock trial competition. So we certainly wish them well and uh, hope they come back victorious. Um, so now we're going to move to public comment uh, for agenda items only. This will be our first of two public comment uh, periods. This is for agenda items only. Uh, just want to remind folks, we need your name and address for the record. Um, your uh, comments will be limited to three minutes. And uh, we're not able to discuss personnel and litigation as a general matter. And also, uh, you may have a complicated question uh, that would require a member of our administrative staff to get back to you with the full answer.
That was a test from our I T S department and the phones are working.
Operators are standing by.
Uh, there haven't been any calls coming in. We do have another public comment later, um, which is good. But at this time, I don't have anything coming through.
Okay. Um, so we're going to go ahead and move into finance and operations. Um, we had our reports last week, but I'll just first ask if our chair or, or our administration uh, have any comments on finance and operations.
I have no further, but Chandra may have an update.
I do have a few fun updates. So last week, uh, we received word from the state about a new grant. It's about called the, um, we're calling the Learning Loss Grant. They haven't really titled it. Uh, but they are using um, CARES money and um, E S S A money. And basically, Department of Education has established uh, seventeen-month grants to support projects that implement evidence-based interventions or quality instruction strategies to address learning loss, student learning loss uh, through additional mathematics, E L A, and so, or social emotional um, supports. So it is a competitive grant. We do have to apply. Deadline is um, January twenty-first. Um, the state has two and a half million dollars to award. Um, schools can apply up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So we will be putting in for that award. Implementation would be from April of two thousand and twenty-one through August of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, this is huge for the state to recognize that there is going to be some serious achievement gaps. I know the board has expressed concerns about this before, so that's good news. Um, next is the CARES grant, which was the very, very first one we received for about nine hundred thousand. Uh, we received an additional allocation um, last week. And we will be looking to um, give, uh, send something in to amend that budget um, in January. Um, I can see in our general budget, we have had to bear some um, P P E expenses, some more technology expenses and administrative costs that were not covered in prior grants. Um, so I think that's where we're headed with it, uh, but we'll be proposing something formally to the board in January. Speaking of, the Digital Divide Grant and the Corona Relief Fund. Those were grants we've mentioned in the past that were supposed to be spent by the end of October and the end of December, respectively. Last week, the Department of Education did a desk audit. Uh, basically, we had to submit to them either purchase orders or invoices, depending if it's been completed or not, on how we were spending those funds. Um, that was submitted on Friday to the Department of Education. We haven't heard back. But I know the primary goal of them, of that audit was to make sure we were not what they call double dipping. With so many grants out there, they want to make sure you are individually spending and not cross, I call it cross-contaminating, but crossing over. Um, so that was last week. Um, and then my final update is a preschool expansion grant. We're hoping to hear by Friday. Some really good news, um, and then we'll have that update for the board uh, and the community in January. That's my update.
Thank you, Chandra. Very excellent uh, work and, and some uh, good things coming our way. So we thank you for that. Um, so in finance and operations, first I'm going to look for a motion on nine point one transfers.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'm going to look for a motion uh, for nine point two through nine point one five.
Marita Sullivan, motion made.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Mr. Price, I.
Second, Mr. Price. Any discussion?
Just on one point, it's nine point one six. We did add the resolution to extend the temporary pandemic substitute rate that we discussed last week. Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
No discussion?
Do we have to, no. Do we have to amend that motion? Mrs. Alco?
Yes, I would amend the motion as long as the first and second agree to it.
Mrs. Sullivan and Mr. Price, do you agree to amend the motion for a finance nine to point two to nine point one six?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I don't see any discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
And I will just say to the community members who are live streaming, watching, um, public comment is over for the first round. We can try again um, during the second round of public comment um, because my phone is actively ringing right now.
All right, we're going to move to, and we'll be there before you know it, we're going to move to personnel. And I'll just ask Charlton, uh, Dr. Char, Dr. Char. Been a long day. Dr. Char, if you have any updates for public session.
I've been called by my last name many times, Mr. President, no problem. I, I do not have any other updates tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So then I'm going to ask for a motion on ten point one through ten point eight.
So may, Delabarka?
Mr. Delabarka and Mr. Price. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving uh, to communications, um, just in terms of board calendar, I'll just remind everyone again and the public that our next meeting will be our reorganization meeting, January the fifth of two thousand and twenty-one at seven P M. Uh, and uh, Mr. Delabarka, do you have anything for us on New Jersey School Boards?
Well, most, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I reported last week, so most of the board members know, but I'll just, a quick summary. Uh, as you know, I have the honor of serving as president of the County School Boards Association. We met about two weeks ago. We had an excellent program on state assessments. I shared the information last week with the board members. Just wanted to comment and compliment our guidance director, Sam Alco, for the outstanding job she did at that time. She's been receiving uh, congratulations from around the state. And uh, her program was shared with all the presidents here in Atlantic County of the local school boards. Uh, other than that, we did meet, uh, have a meeting yesterday of the county leaders on a web um, meeting. There was about forty or fifty members present at that time, which was excellent. And the meeting was from two, uh, a couple, two students from um, uh, high school in um, the middle of the state. I'm, I'm going to share more details of this year uh, at a later time. I don't think it's a good time for me to share it at this evening because it's quite detailed. But the students had a great program at their high school, where they're involving more kids and recognizing the students in a, in a nice way. And I think I'd like to share it with administration sometime and uh, maybe we would look into it too because uh, it's um, really a fair program and I think we might like to hear about it. But I don't think I want to take the time this evening to share. I'd rather have Dr. Gruccio there and, and uh, I want her to hear the details of it. But thank you. Well, that's all. Our next meeting for the county school boards is February seventeenth. I'll certainly have reminders out by the time we get to that uh, month. And thank you for the time, Pete.
Very good. You're welcome, Lou. Thanks for the report. Um, yes, word has traveled far and wide of Mrs. Alco's uh, excellent presentation. We, we appreciate that. Um, so at this point, uh, we are going to move into our public comment uh, period on uh, any topic. And uh, uh, again, I'll just uh, repeat, we uh, ask you to give your name and address for the record. Uh, public comment is three minutes. Um, we uh, generally cannot speak about personnel and litigation. Um, and it's possible that if you have a complicated, complex question, uh, a member of our administration will have to get back to you uh, tomorrow or the next day with the answer. So we'll take public comment.
Mr. President, while we're waiting for the phone, this is Mr. Price. Are we going to do a Board of Education email? Um, in other words, we sent the questions in and we want to hear some answers. Uh, do we, are we going to hear that before the end of the meeting?
So I think i- in other words, if we received any email questions?
Right. I know I sent some email questions in and other people did as well. I was just wondering if Chandra's going to uh, read them like she normally does.
Oh, I. Yeah, I usually do and I did forget. We can do that. Um, the phone is actively ringing. It's up to you, Mr. President. I can put these people on hold or you just let me know.
Why don't we, well, a- after we finish, before board member comment, we'll do those. Sound good?
Thank you.
And there was, and Mr. President, there was nothing for policy as we didn't have a meeting. I didn't know, Mr.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good, okay, yeah.
It's okay.
We have our first caller. Egg Harbor Township Public Comment, please state your name and your address, please.
Bernie Cruz, one zero two Kathy's Lane.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Yes, I had a question for the uh, board in regards to special ed and not having his children back into in-person schooling. I have concerns and I've expressed in emails to the director of special ed who I've yet to hear back from email-wise. I do believe that having virtual learning for my son in particular, being special needs is a waste of time. I urge the board and the teachers to get back into school as soon as they can. And whoever put the letter together regarding the special ed, saying that it was a success, virtual learning, I think uh, they did not have their uh, data put together correctly. Now, as far as all of the teachers going back and that being a collective bargaining thing, I think maybe we should reconsider who wants to work and who doesn't want to work. Maybe if they don't want to go back to work, we can consider using a virtual learning long-term. And as regards to one teacher can teach many more teach, many more students than in person, meaning virtually you can do more students at one time versus in person. So maybe we can cut the teacher staff in half to save money that way. And I'm very curious to see what the plan is here to get these kids back to school. I think we're all a little tired of uh, of this, tired of being a facilitator. Don't see any end to this, meaning as far as a long-term solution here. I don't understand why the private schools in this area are able to have school and we are not. Why aren't we doing what they're doing as far as whatever procedures they have in place? Looking forward to hearing the excuses and the empty answers that I plan on getting. That'll do.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we thank you for your comment. We uh, we certainly realize the importance of special ed. Uh, I think everyone will remember uh, when we started the year. Um, our special ed population was back in person on September the eighth, where our general ed population uh, was in on October the twenty-sixth. Um, so uh, we intend going forward to do the very best we can uh, to see that the needs of these students are met. We take it very seriously and we understand it. We, we cannot do what private schools do and, and smaller schools do because we have larger numbers. And we have a different set of circumstances to deal with as a larger district because of the density of students in our, in our buildings. Those are facts. But we're doing the best we can, and we will continue to do the best we can. And I will see if, if Mr. Santilli has anything to add, or we'll, you know, we'll just go to our next question, whatever you prefer, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. I would, I'd also just reiterate, you know, exactly what you had said. There's, there's no excuses, you know, that, that we're gonna be putting out there. We, we have made every effort to provide the services, both academic and related services, from the onset, early on in the year, to support our special education population as well as all students. And I think I'd reiterate also what Dr. Grucho had mentioned as well, that, you know, right now, this is a team approach, and hearing from our parents is certainly welcomed. And we are trying to do our best to work with each parent that, that may need assistance. Our case managers are available, our supervisors, our director, and that will continue to be the case moving forward. We're here to provide support, I think, and, 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 you know, if these circumstances weren't before us, based off of what we're faced with, with the pandemic, of course, I think we all have the same mission and, and goal. It's just that we need to continue to work together to get there.
Thank you. We do have our next caller, if you're ready. Okay. Okay, you are live streaming. Please state your name and address for public comment.
This Butcher, three twenty-seven Seapine Drive.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Hey, everybody. Happy holidays. I was delighted to hear that the district is applying for the addressing student learning loss grant through the DOE. I know that this is only gonna touch a small portion of the needs of the district, and it's highly competitive, given that only about sixteen school districts throughout the state will be awarded this $156,000 grant. Now, with the district currently identifying the achievement gap on the slide, it's concentrated particularly in the primary grade and among our English language learners, our special ed students, our lower-income and other disadvantaged students.
Is that it for your public comment, Ms. Butcher, or do you have another one?
I have one more questionnaire for that.
You can go ahead. Go with your timer, and then we can respond after.
Okay. Do you want me to ask my question now?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. I was disappointed that ESY over this past summer occurred virtually and not in person, in particular since we saw a dramatic decrease in the virus and numbers over the summertime. It only further widened this gap, particularly among our special education students and other English language learner students. How do we plan to be a little bit more innovative this summer? We can hold classes outside, and we can look to best practices around the state, so that you could expand on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we thank you, Liz, for your, your partnership with us and, and your input. And I think you know that we are doing the very best we can for our special needs population. I'm gonna go to Steve for, for a few particulars, if you have them. And we'll, you know, we'll go from there.
Okay, so there's a couple of things I just wanted to point out. First, our director, just like we've had many supervisors present so far in regards to their content areas in preparation for budget. That will, that will also take place for special education moving forward. And that's gonna, it's right now slated for January. So ultimately, I know Mr. Dorso and his team will certainly not just be speaking to their budget in regards to how it would relate to special education, but also they would be expanding upon what their plans are. Without getting into specifics right now, just because we're in this environment that we're in, the planning does not stop, and it is constantly taking place. We're just at a place right now that it's being driven by, unfortunately, this pandemic and the, the case count in this particular area and what we're able to manage as a district. But that will be forthcoming in January. And in addition to that, we are looking to get creative, let's say, and provide best practices within our ESY program. And I anticipate that that would be also part of the conversation that would take place during that presentation in January. In addition to that, you've heard other things that we're gonna be hopefully expanding upon. There is some grant opportunities out there for the learning loss. Yes, it's a competitive grant, but nonetheless, it's something that we still will be pursuing to make sure that we can, again, provide supports. This isn't just a conversation about special education. It's about all the students and any learning loss that may be occurring during this time. And we have many subgroups that we need to continue to focus on. And in turn, you know, data that we continue to compile for our tier one, tier two, and tier three students, and trying to really stay on top of what those interventions are gonna be to address those needs moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. We do have one, when you're ready, okay? Okay, public comment, you're live streaming. Please repeat your name and your address, please.
Chris Weaver, ten Polbridge Road.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Good evening. My name is Chris Weaver, and I have two children in the NP programs. And I was a little bit concerned about this email we received where the director stated that so far this online learning has been a success. I'm really confused about how nobody I've talked to, parents, teachers, have been asked about their opinions. And the question is, you know, when are we gonna be asked about how we feel and what's gonna happen, and what the future holds for our kids? That's pretty much my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I would encourage you to reach out directly to our administration and, and speak one-on-one. Of course, we want to hear everyone's view and everyone's opinion.
I don't have anybody else in queue. If you want to put the slide back up. At this time, it's been a full minute with it on the screen, so I think we can close public comment.
Very good. So before we go to Chandra with, with those questions, you know, I just, I just want to finish up, you know, public comment with, of course, we want to get our special needs students back as soon as we can. We want all our students back in school as soon as we can. So as we had, you know, said earlier in the meeting, we, we certainly all hope that 2021 sees a, a quick break, and we see that light at the end of the tunnel, and we're hoping to put this terrible time behind us and, and, and move forward. So I want to thank everyone for, for comments. We're gonna go to now our listing of board member questions, then we'll go to board member comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castellano. And actually, at work session, I don't believe we did this either, so I have both comments up or questions up for the public watching. We give the agenda to the Board of Education on a Friday prior to the Tuesday of the meeting. They get a chance to look at the agenda over the weekend and submit any questions for clarification prior to taking action. So when you actually watch the meeting, they're not just yesing, they actually do have some additional information if they need clarity. So starting with the work session last week, there was a question regarding bills for payment for fires, alarm service calls with our vendor. The question was, were these service calls to the vendor to help fix the false alarms that have been happening district-wide? And the response to that was just, no, these were specific to maybe checking a sensor or swapping out batteries district-wide, whatever may happen to check why we get faulty calls. When faulty calls are in the same area, we do remedy it. When they're in different areas with the amount of sensors district-wide, it's hard to say, you know, which one will collect us at one point or another, unfortunately. Another question was for Kelly Services. The board did resolve to increase the rates during a temporary pandemic rate. So the bill was, you know, seventy-two thousand for ten days of service in October, and that was correct. We just provided more information of statistics on how many people were covered during that time period. I will just do all the departments, if that's okay with you, Mr. Castellano, to keep this moving, because that was just finance, but then there were, you know, questions about resignations and personnel. We won't go into, as well as preschool grants for full-time paraprofessionals. And yes, there are full-time paraprofessionals in each classroom for the preschool grant proposal. Preschool grant will also have a secretary on staff that we'll be hiring for to help with processing the anticipated students and keeping track of the requirements for the DOE. For purchases, we have on the bills list a Turn It In, which is a service we pay for, as well as the Atlantic County ABA. Basically, we provide a clarity that Turn It In, there are sixty-three classes with four thousand submissions to that service, so it is something that we find worthwhile. For the Atlantic County ABA, they have been put on notice that will be canceling for next year, twenty-one, twenty-two. A suspension report was updated. For transportation, there was a bus accident, but everybody was okay. There was a very small, minor injury to the actual bus. And the committee report for finance was discussed at the full board level. Starting with, then moving on to this meeting, some questions that were asked. The pre-case spots are on this agenda. Just an update on how many spots were filled, how many spots are left. Primarily, master teacher was filled, teachers were filled, interventionist, social worker, moving towards other teachers, paraprofessionals, and secretaries before the February first implementation. There was a personnel question on references, can't really get into. Pool maintenance, we do pay to maintain the pool even during closure. It's twenty-three eighty-five was actual monthly maintenance fee. And that's to keep the chemicals at level. I mean, it does still get tested multiple times a week, and we do have to keep the pool operating during closure. The alternative is drain it and not do anything with it, but we do maintain the mechanics of our buildings while we are closed. So that is the updates for board questions for the past two weeks.
Thank you very much, Chandra. So at this point, I'll ask board members if they have any comments. Mrs. Sullivan?
I just want the public to know that out of all of our board members and our administrators, we all have children in school. We all want them to get back as soon as possible. Many of us are parents with school-aged children now, or grandparents who are watching the, and responsible for the teaching of, of the children. When you see a low number, you know, say, I'm just gonna throw it out there, a hundred cases that we might have, you have to remember that if it's a teacher, then all those students have to be quarantined. So we really have thousands of people that are involved in this COVID, and we're doing the very best we can. Every member of this board wants to get the kids back as soon as possible. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other board members? Let's see, Mr. Price and then Mrs. Byrd.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to take, excuse me, take the opportunity now to welcome Terry onboard. And I'm looking forward, I know we all are, to a new year coming up, and we got a lot of things that are very challenging, and I think we're up to the challenge, and as long as we work together, we'll get through this together. And I appreciate the phone calls that came in tonight, and I know you've said it many times, we hear you and we're responding. But, you know, unless you keep the phone calls coming in, we, we need to know what's happening and how you feel, and we will respond to that, which we have. Also, I want to wish everybody happy holidays. And we'll see you all next year. So that's it from, from me for tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments to the families that have circumstances that make virtual learning even more difficult than than it is for some other types of families. We hear you. And I assure you that our administration, our teachers, and our staff, and, and the Board of Education, we, we hear you. We know how hard this is. This is not easy for anyone. And when you have extra difficulties or extra obstacles, you know, you might not be able to send a child to daycare or have a babysitter in because a child might have, you know, certain different abilities that prohibit them from those types of experiences. We hear you. We know that being in school is what's best for students. We know that. We're, we're, we do this because we care about learning and students and our community. So we're not up here to make things harder for anyone. We're up here, and we will take the comments, and we will take the criticism, and we will take the questions because that's what we do. We're trying to help. We're trying to contribute. We're trying to get our kids back in school. But I think that as a community, we also have to take responsibility for the choices we're making outside of school. Are we going to parties with our, with lots of people? Are we wearing masks all the time? The actions that we do as a community outside of school impacts our students going back to school. So we need to work together and make sure that our children on the playground, they have masks on. When we go shopping, we have masks on. We refrain from going to parties or going to places where there are lots of people. It takes a community effort. We can only do so much in this leadership position if we have people making choices that are just tying our hands. So please, please, we want our kids back in school. Just make choices outside of school that we can get these numbers down. It takes a team. We have to work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. Agree a hundred percent. Any other board members? I see, ah, Mrs. Alabar, Ms. Alabar, and she has the electronic hand raised too. Very tech savvy. I love it.
Yes, I, I'm on Google Meet pretty much all day, every day as a teacher. And I don't want to say again what other board member said because I totally agree, but I just want to throw a shout out to the teachers. It is a really difficult job to teach virtually. I have been doing it since March. If anyone thinks it's easier for us to control students online than it is in a school setting, it's not. It, it really takes a lot of extra work, and I know a lot of teachers that are really going above and beyond. And as a community and as a school district, we all just need to work together. And hopefully, if everyone's diligent, that we will be going back sooner than later.
Thank you, Terry, and, you know, again, welcome back. Any other board members? Okay, well, so, so here we are at, at the conclusion. So again, I want to thank board members for all of your hard work this year. You know, again, this was not an easy year. This was a very difficult year, and we're hoping for a better 2021 ahead. And everything's been said already. I think about that. So we're all gonna just- So we're all gonna just hope, hope and pray that twenty twenty-one brings better things our way, and I believe it will. So again, I'm going to wish everyone safe, happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you for joining us and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Solagi, hands, and we are adjourned. Thank you all, everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.